Good evening, justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated. I'll call the meeting to order and ask the recorded treasurer to call the roll.
Barnes, Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Here.
You have in front of you tonight's agenda. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve that as presented.
Make a motion up here.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes, Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Yes.
Also, you have in front of you the minutes for the September 12th meeting and also the September 17th special meeting and the monthly financials. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Yes.
Brings us down to department head. Reports, starting out, we'll have the airport commission. I think we have, we may have Jason, I saw him earlier.
Son of a...
Hayes, just an update on kind of what's going on at the airport. Meeting is the 21st, correct? I think Susan texted me, so we have a meeting coming. I couldn't remember what day that was, so it'll be the 21st will be our next meeting.
Is it still at noon?
Yes, sir.
Still talking with Eddie? I'll interrupt you before you get started. Lease status on the, still a couple wording things on that.
Had a productive meeting, hash out details, sent the lease out. There was, hasn't been signed yet. There was one discrepancy on with the numbers and so we'll continue working on that.
Yeah, anything?
We've got the fence grant approved, so that should be starting. We're redoing the whole fence system around the property, updating that and just getting it in better shape. The Dawson 100 by 100 is pretty much done. We had a group of schools come in from the surrounding counties this last month and just based this presentation on, you know, airport maintenance and stuff and trying to recruit some people to get into that field. Next year's project, we'll be doing a taxiway down to the lower property. We've removed all the dirt that we're gonna let go off the airport and moving that dirt over to the end of the runway will be worked into the grant. So that'd be a fee that we don't have to incur.
That's it. And all I had was moonshine festivals coming up, 1st of November. And in the event, we might have some overflow parking, I don't know, but it seemed like we have a lot of room at the fairgrounds. This is, and I need any volunteers that want to help with that. I told Will Budd and the group at Fairfield Bay, they're always looking for volunteers. But in the event, have too much to park over there, want to talk to the airport commission, you guys. If we have overflow parking, it'd need to be somewhere close and then maybe shuttle them. I have no idea how we'll shuttle them, but maybe park, I don't know, we could park some here or on the land down there. It used to be Ben Mays's, I don't know what we call it now, but it's, airport owns that. It's about as close as you can get. But I'm gonna bring that up on the meeting in 21st. I'm a little more optimistic that we'll have enough parking over there than I was. I hope it's dry, you know, that's always a big factor for that. That's one thing I wanted to mention to the airport and I will on the 21st. That's about all I have. Any questions or anything for?
You got shuttles to move people if they have to park far off?
Yeah, I don't, but I...
I mean, they do?
Yeah, I'm hoping they do. I hope they do.
If it's dry, I mean, they can park over there on my runway.
What's that?
So if it's dry, they can park over there on my runway. I got a hole.
Yeah, you got, yeah.
It's just right over the hill.
Weather's a factor, let's not jinx it, but yeah.
As long as it's not wet, you know? Because it'll be muddy whenever it is.
Before we drive.
Walk over there if they're gonna have the drive.
Yeah.
Jason will be calling you.
May be able to talk to the Masonic Lodge.
But I hope we have that problem. But it's always a good event. Lone Star is pretty popular, they'll be going to. I ask again, did I need to waive anything on the noise? They're gonna be done at 10 o'clock. They're very, you know, adamant about that, no problem. So looking forward to it. All 2530160, anybody wants to volunteer to help park cars over there, whatever that event, give me a shout. I'll be meeting with them Tuesday of this coming week, anybody wants to go over there with me. It's all I have on the airport, nothing else? Thank you. Brings us to animal control. Rita Tharp.
Okay, we started out with 24 dogs. We had eight dogs sent out on transport to Massachusetts. We have five more that will be leaving on October the 18th, and that will bring us down to 11 dogs. Cats, well, what can I say? We currently have 18 cats and kittens. I'm current, we're currently looking for also a feline rescue, you know, that'll take them. Never have done that before, but I'm told that they exist. Usually they don't, but anyway, we're gonna go for it. I picked up a German Shepherd at 295 McIntyre. No one claimed it, it was pulled to rescue. I waited the legal amount of days and no one claimed it. I picked up two dogs at 1151 Highway 95 West. They were rabies suspects. I took them to the vet, had them, whatever, I'm not gonna go there, but anyway, they came back negative for rabies, probably was distemper. I bleached the truck and the cages and did everything the vet told me to do. I picked up a dog at Casey's, it was a, like a hound dog, not claimed. I waited the amount of time, rescue pulled it. We had an adoption event at Simmons Bank, they hosted it. They got donations, like food for cats and dogs and some bleach and dish liquid, things like that for us. And we had adopted out two pups and one cat at that event. And it was on a Wednesday from 8 to 12, so go figure.
Didn't have far to go though, Simmons Bank. I said you didn't have far to go.
No, we walked them up there. Walked them up there, walked them back, and everything else is going good, I mean, as far as I know. We're moving dogs and that's where it's about.
Well, I'm glad adopting them out, so that piggybacking that 501(c)(3) is already paying off.
It's actually, Richard, it's actually termed umbrella under it.
Right.
Is how they usually, I mean corporations even do that.
Using my own lingo, but...
Well, okay.
A lady from, or...
Yes.
Secretary of State was up here and they're, you know, they're over that, so I'm gonna go see them next week and I'll talk to you about maybe going down there and say, you know, may not help, may not expedite yours. Other thing, we had a question of a goat running around town. Dennis Richardson got that back to his owner.
I got that haul.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah. So the goat's back home where it's supposed to go. It may be back home. The owner's been contacted and Dennis can handle the goat, putting it up for a time. Still, I didn't see Eddie today, but I do want you and him to get together on the trust. I think the fact that you're umbrellaed under that is gonna help a lot to...
Oh, yeah.
You and him just work that out. That's all I've got on animal control. That's good that we'll get back down there.
Where are we at on the 501(c)(3)?
They're umbrellaed under one.
No, I mean, I know that, but where are we on the one that they're trying to get for them?
Well, technically, I don't want to spend $600 to $900 until I have a lease with the city, because we have to have an address to go with.
That was the last thing. When we do our, start our budget and it's coming up pretty soon, end of this month, we'll start talking very seriously about...
And as soon as that's done, then we will get it.
We'll look at leasing the building. We do that for, you know, a dollar a year, whatever, also. They'll give us a contract, you know, almost home, a contract with the city of Clinton. And we'll decide on what amount we can afford for that and what they...
Where did you send the dogs to this time? What state?
Massachusetts, it's a muck rescue. It's Laurie Gerusick, she's got a...
All six of them went to Massachusetts?
Oh, yeah. All 13.
13 of them, yeah.
Um, she has a huge, huge facility.
She has her own, like, vets, she has her own trainers, she has it all. So if one of them has an issue, they can fix it. Where we can't always, because we have them in there, they're close together, you can't get them to focus. I had to walk one plum up to Simmons Bank to get it, to focus enough I could teach it to sit down and shake. So, you know, we try to get them basic stuff, but you can't always do it. It's hectic there. It's been really busy.
I had that trouble in school focusing. Still do.
Just in school?
Yeah, you got that right. Okay, anything else for animal control? No, you're doing a great job and we're happy about that. I'd say it's working out good.
It is, I can do it with them kids.
Yeah, well, you got a great...
They're right there.
Yeah, you got a great crew helping you. Thank you very, very, very much.
You bet.
Brings us down to Fire Department Chief DL Webb, your report.
We've had a busy month, start off with the fire expo. It went very well. Our ladder truck was pretty much a hit with everybody. Hose tests has been completed on all the fire trucks. We had a kitchen fire call at Patton Square Apartments, a vehicle wreck on 65 and 16 East, a vehicle wreck by Pizza Hut, vehicle fire at the doctor's building by the hospital. We had a call for smell of smoke at a house on 16 West. Fire alarm call at Petty Gene Electric, lift assist for survival flight up here on Patton Street. And then just the other day, we had a structured fire on Old Highway 9. It was a total loss of the house. It was an older home, but I do want to thank members of the fire departments from Bee Branch, Damascus and Choctaw came and helped. And Warren Johnson, OEM, he was real quick to get ahold of the Red Cross, had them up there very fast. So it was, for a bad situation, it went really well. That's all the calls that we've had this month. I would like to request to move some money, the line item that we have, the rent of the building that we're using from Justin to house the ladder truck right now. I'd like to move $3,500 from the line item of fire truck, the line item fire truck, to the rent. That'll get us through the rest of this year.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
How much is that rent now?
It's a thousand a month.
Thousand a month, yeah.
Is that what we've always been paying?
No, no.
It changed at the first this year.
It changed first this year and we only had it funded till this month, or last month, last month, so this will finish out the rest of this year.
Any other questions? I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Yes.
I'd also like to request to be able to close the streets down for Halloween night, Thursday, October 31st, for scare on the square. We expect another big crowd this year, so like to shut the streets down for that.
Okay, that's all the streets around the square and adjoining street, main and these side streets. I'll entertain a motion from...
5 o'clock till 11.
Yeah, 5 till 11. Motion second. Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Yes.
We are in negotiations with forestry. I've talked with them. The mayor asked me to get ahold of them. The contract with the two-year contract we have with them is up, so we're looking at renegotiating that for rent for another two years, so hopefully we'll have something on that pretty quick. The building is going good. If you haven't seen, there's red iron going up. Talked to Mr. Walls, the construction manager up there, he said every, the bulk of the red iron is coming in slow, but he still plans on being done maybe by the second week of April, if everything goes good. So that's gonna be a month and a half ahead of schedule. If there's any questions I can answer, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
No, thanks, this is not, I want to go ahead and do this since we just closed the court square. It'll be, it was under, I may have it on your informational under streets. Valerie Lawson was wanting to have a color run on November the 16th. You got in front of you the route. It includes parts of Yellow Jacket, Patton, Hall Street, Frazier, and I'll put any additional street needed for safety. It's for Saturday, November the 16th, from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. I'd like permission to close the streets off in that area for the color run for the FCC LA, which is home ec, as for us old people.
So moved.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote for that.
Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, DL. I know you probably gotta get, your dad's getting a little bit stronger every little bit, so not getting much sleep, so do the best you can. Anything else for the chief? So long and thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Brings us down to Parks and Rec Department, Charles Wilson.
I don't have a whole lot for parks, it's slowing down. I think we got a couple more little events, but park looks pretty good. Everything's in pretty good shape, but we've been working on a little roller Richard and I bought a while back. It kind of tore up, but we've been trying to put it back together, which will help with the rocks once we get it going. It's something we haul on the trailer down there real easy and help get some of the rocks down, maybe do some dirt work and take it up and help Craig at the ball field at school, so, yeah, it's gonna be a handy little machine once we get it back up to snuff, so other than that, I don't have anything.
Call from Mincy Hargan for our fun park grant, 100%, $100,000. We're in the finals, whatever, we were in the finals last year. I almost didn't even want to say it, but anyway, there's, I think 20, we made the top 20 in the state, so we, I don't know how many they dole out, but I'm pretty con, well, we'll see. So that's where we're at on that. Also talked to, just give me a second here, I may have that under, that really falls under Streets, but Trey Foster, talked to him this coming Tuesday about the other grant with the sidewalks connecting the park and also the skate park. I'll have a bottom line for you next council meeting. He's gonna meet me next week, so we're still on board for that. That's all I have on part of the other thing is I'm gonna let these gentlemen get up here and what we have here, Performance Service Lighting, we talked last month about a drone being in town. These were the guys that were flying the drones and was up here for a day and a half. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, tell them what they do for a living and also may help us with some of our lighting problems in the park downtown, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Met them at municipal league and I was gonna be sure and tell them, they didn't hound me and bug me and bug me, I approached them and the more I looked at it, the more impressed I was, so I'll turn it over to you.
Give me just a second to get set up here.
All right, all right. But...
This guy's got a one. Where do you want me to stand? Where's the easiest? Stand back there.
Whatever, yeah, wherever you can see everyone and...
Get out of everybody.
Maybe see you and maybe get up here and I can see you.
Is that right there? Oh, I understand, I said all the time. I drive all over this state. It's a beautiful state. We're Performance Services. My name's Donnie Chambers, that's Robert Gandy. We provide infrastructure solutions for cities and towns that reduce costs or enhance revenue, oftentimes both. We do this through the use of performance contracting. This method minimizes the need to raise taxes or utility rates for city residents. Unlike contracting methods that encourage builders to design complicated solutions in order to secure more lucrative contracts, Arkansas's performance contract legislation requires our team to provide a written guarantee that the project's financial benefits will reduce the project's financial burden. Our solution doesn't perform as promised. Performance services is legally required to write the city a check for any benefits that fail to materialize. We do all of this with guaranteed designs, guaranteed outcomes, and we do no change orders whatsoever. That's our company's policy. So if we were to give you a price, that's the price. If anybody's had a construction project with cost overruns, that doesn't happen with our company. It's written into our contract. Let me see here, if this is gonna work.
You can do change orders if you want to do additional work, we can add that in, but we will never ask you for more money for stuff you've contracted with us.
Sorry about the technical problem.
It's all right, I'd help you, but you don't want any of that. I am the technical problem.
If anybody wants to scan that QR code, we have some handouts, you can do it later as well. That'll give you some more information about our company. Like I said, we're an integrated design and construction company. We focus on energy-saving solutions such as implementing solar, smart lighting, LED upgrades and any other sort of smart city solutions. We do water, wastewater, pretty much any infrastructure that the city has a need with. Been in business since 1998, and I'm gonna go through these slides pretty quick, so I'm gonna get on the part that you guys are interested in. $3.3 billion worth of work. The part that I like to point out on this slide is in 1998, shortly after starting, we got our first contract with the school district in Avon High School in Indiana. It's pretty well in the community, but we've been working with them ever since. I think we just closed our 19th contract with them and have done over $700 million worth of work since then. 60% of our customers are repeat business. If you guys were to choose to work with us on a project, we don't consider that a win until you decide to work with us a second time. Guiding principles, our words, our bond, relationships matter, we fulfill our promises, and the customer is 100% always in control. When we do a project with a city, it's your project, we're here serving the city and its residents, making sure that you get the outcome that you want. This slide, I'm gonna go quickly, we have a third party that does customer experience surveys, yeah, thank you. This is for our branch, we call it the Moore Branch, because we're Missouri and Arkansas, so the folks you would be working with when working with our company. 81% response rate of people surveyed, 100% excellent or very good rating, 100% truly loyal customers. Again, 60% of our customers are repeat business. Now, the part about Clinton, bottom line up front, it's very, very dark. We're hoping to, the mayor asked us to look at ways to brighten the city up. Downtown area, lighting does not encourage economic activity or development, safety and security is compromised. City roads, it's difficult to see while driving at night, in and out of towns, specifically at the intersections and turnoffs. City parks, lighting's not adequate for evening activities. There is some lighting there, not all of them work, but the infrastructure, it would be, for the Parks Department, it would be a never-ending battle. Your Park Department's doing great, it's just the infrastructure in place is not set up for them to succeed. They would constantly be putting out fires with that infrastructure. We brought in a drone pilot, and I just want to show you a few videos here. This is your downtown area. These ghosts are pretty slow, but mayor, if you want to comment on any of this, I know you've seen my videos.
Yeah, you can see where you're at, then they'll show us the nighttime, you know. It's a lot darker, you know, there's, there's looking back at Sids and you really don't notice how dark it is until you start seeing that. I get, you get used to, I know where to turn, but it's pretty dark. And when I saw those, I was like, eh.
I grew up in a very small town with a city square, and I've traveled to a lot of hunt and I fish, and one of the best, my favorite things when I travel for an outdoor activity to a town like Clinton is go out with my buddies, go hunting, go fishing at night, go out, have some pizza, have some beer, whatever, and enjoy, you know, a nice meal. You've got a beautiful downtown, a beautiful downtown, and if there was more lighting, I think there would be a lot more business owners willing to bring in more tax revenue if people felt safe at night to park their cars and walk to those businesses.
And I know we're talking about light pollution during the eclipse, we don't want light pollution. And I made the comment, like, they just talking about kind of lighting they do is direct and they don't, you know, it's...
Yeah, traditional high intensity lighting, halide, sodium, high pressure sodium, that stuff just goes everywhere. LED is very directional, and so it basically just shoots exactly where you point it and it doesn't fly out everywhere, so.
You've got more controls over the brightness of the light, you can dim it, you can make it the way it needs to be for the purpose that you're trying to serve. You can see here if, you know, this turnoff in particular, these are walking path lights, they're not helping with the road. You know, you go from a little bit of lighting to nothing.
Yeah, our LEDs are dim, looking at that a lot more than they were. They said they'd last 12 years, and they have, it's 10th year, I think.
You wouldn't know, this is the other side of town, you wouldn't know there's a road here except for this light and the cars.
Yeah, that's Stevenson Oil's coming up, I think, yep. That's up my arch. I couldn't figure out where that sign was. So...
Most of the lighting in town is coming from businesses, currently. And there's a road there, yeah, there's another car.
What time was this?
This was probably 8 o'clock. I think we left at 9 o'clock at night, so, and this isn't too late.
Yeah.
And then you see it during the day. Clinton's a beautiful town. It is an amazing town, but at night, you can't really get out and about.
Well, I'd mentioned to y'all, I have a hard time, well, I'll have to talk about this, getting off of 65 and service lines.
I should have pointed it out at the beginning of the video, I've got it in the next slide, highlighted, but a lot of these lights are, the conduits run under the ground, so the conduit comes up and then you've got the elbow, that's, you know, squirrel could chew that, becomes an electrical hazard all of a sudden, a kid could cut it. Several of these lights are out, they're older. Again, nothing your Parks Department is doing wrong. This is, they would have to be replacing these, maintaining these all the time.
You spend your time on that, don't you?
Got 60 volts on one end.
Hey, you can see at night how dark it is.
Hope you're able to fix that. Yeah, I think you...
Even if the lights that weren't working were working, it's, it's still not bright enough for, you know, a lady or somebody, a young kid out running at night. I'll be down there. Not enough to provide, you know, adequate lighting for evening activities, baseball games, and the like.
And I told you the problem of our park, it floods, it's supposed to flood, it's an overflow, and I think you tried to address that with toxic pollution.
Yeah, these lights really aren't big enough, tall enough to, you know, to manage that. I know, mayor, you mentioned, you know, pulling some stuff back here to open up views into the river access for fishermen and such.
Yeah, just where you see, they've got a great little creek there, it's hard to see on the walking trail, but it's kind of...
It's a great park. I mean, I could see, you know, baseball teams playing here, youth leagues playing tournaments, soccer, if you had a soccer field, I mean, there's, there's a lot. I mean, it's a beautiful park. You know, as soon as the lights go down, not usable anymore. This is what it looks like at night, you start to see some of the gaps here, here. These are really dimmed.
You say you get 60 volts on one end, start out with it.
Start out, one hand, you get 60 volts on the other hand. Actually, 220, you get 60 volt.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this... Yeah, here's some of the issues I wanted to point out. These are really dirty, these are gonna be hard to keep clean. Again, Parks Department would be cleaning these year-round, the way they're designed. This is potential for an electrical hazard. If a kid cut it, vandalism, all of a sudden that light's out and you're having to pay for repairs. This is a light that was just being held up by a tree. Our proposed solution is to upgrade the lighting infrastructure for the downtown area, parks and Highway 65. It's not exclusive to those areas. Part of what the mayor wanted to accomplish tonight by having us come in is, he asked us to look at... by having us come in is, he asked us to look at the issues and to propose the solutions. If tonight, you, after tonight, you guys talk and say, well, what about this area? What about that area? You've got a really nice warm memorial downtown by the parks that isn't really well lit up, and, you know, that can be added. But the, the solution we're proposing, it's a scalable solution, it's a smart pole, it, it includes, if you want, security cameras, improved internet access, so you can work with your telecom provider and help expand that coverage. Uh, several safety features like blue call, or the, the call boxes, the blue light call boxes. For the residents, it shows a commitment to safety, visibility, and usability of community spaces. For businesses, it encourages economic development and activity, they know their customers are gonna feel comfortable coming out at night, so they're more likely to open a business downtown. And it discourages vandalism and criminal activity, which helps the police department, and the city as a whole. Some of the benefits of smart lighting, I mean, Gandy, do you wanna talk about, he's an engineer, so I'll let him talk about these details.
So, you know, it's beyond just the additional lighting and light quality, it's much more natural light that you're getting from these LEDs instead of that kinda yellow-orange you get from other metal halide or high-pressure sodium lights. But like Donnie said, um, they have the benefit of being very modular and flexible in terms of how you can add parts and pieces to them. You know, he mentioned security cameras, you don't have to have that in every pole, you can have it in, you know, every fifth pole, or, you know, spots where you know you've got issues, you can have a camera in it, and because it's on the broadband and wifi, you can pull that, uh, data anytime you need to. It helps the police keep an eye on things without having to run somebody out there every time. Um, so, those are really good benefits, and then having the call boxes every so often, you know, if there's somebody that's out there, running, jogging, whatever, they come across, you know, somebody trying to get to them, they can run and hit the call box.
Something suspicious, or if they just see somebody vandalizing something, they can report it right there, and it's gonna go directly to the people who need to respond. These, as Gandy said, these applications are not on every pole, they're at your discretion, you don't have to have them day one. Um, the mayor did mention, you know, there, they talk about the need for security cameras, the need to reduce vandalism, um, safety, wanting people to be out and running, so we wanted to inform you of those options. The Parks Department, it's gonna reduce your installation, maintenance, and management costs. The, these poles are not gonna have to be cleaned the same way, they're self-cleaning.
Didn't mention how they're powered.
Yeah, they're solar-powered, and, um, I'm gonna show you that on another slide. Um, essentially, they wrap a sol, a vertical solar panel here, so you're getting three-hundred-and-sixty-degree lighting. Uh, the batteries and the energy is up here, so if the parks flood and you get these down there, one, they're not tied into the grid, so the lights are still gonna work during a natural disaster, um, if the grid goes down. And then, two, because all of the components are at the top, as long as the water doesn't reach up there, the lights are still in good shape. All that might need to be done is having pole itself hose down if things get on it. Um, it's gonna deliver energy cost savings, so you're gonna go from having an energy bill to not having an energy bill for these poles. Um, and it's gonna enhance community safety, improve visibility for drivers, pedestrians, and bikers. And as Gandy said, it's gonna be a brighter light with uniform distribution targeted in the areas where you want it to be, not creating light pollution. Here, here's what some of the poles look like. They can be taller, the bases can be different, the, the heads can be different, but here's some examples. I know in the parks, I think we're looking at this style, where they're gonna be pretty tall up on concrete bases. Um, we're gonna install those with, if we did the project, we would install them with the, um, lightning rod in the ground, so that they wouldn't be affected by that. Um, you know, in the park areas, you can also put some of these in certain areas by benches. Uh, flood-resistant, wind-resistant up to a hundred and eighty miles an hour, grid-independent, reduces light pollution, and it's low, very low maintenance.
Yeah, and I'll just tell the council, we, we've talked about it, but our weak spots is obviously the walking trail, we get more calls on that, and y'all get probably more calls on that. Pulling off sixty-five in certain spots where it's dark, uh, somebody, you know, eventually it'd be nice to go from Walmart all the way to Archie Bridge with some type of lighting. I know it's, bottom line, what's it gonna cost, but if we did do, try to do a pilot program, if they could put together something for the next, for the next month and say, we'll lead it, the military, you know, the little kiddie park there where the fountain is and all that, we've had trouble with our conduit there, you know, those lights and...
Well, I mean, all that system was put in thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago.
I like the idea, you buy the pole, you can add onto it what you want, I'm sure it's not free.
And, I mean, everything down there is outdated, so what's the, the limit date on this stuff? I mean, like, I can't get globes, I can't get fixtures, everything is down there, I have to take back the shop and glue back together and repair and fix, 'cause I can't get anything to fit those poles.
Yeah, um, so these poles, um, I know the CEO personally that owns the patent to this, is the only pole that's kind, I know DOT is using these in a lot of states right now on the highways. Um, if you've got a list of questions, uh, you want answered, I can get those answered from him, he's even willing to come down here, he's out of Louisiana, um, but I know these are very, very popular highways. Um, I know that the cost of the applications, like, if you were to add a security camera, you buy the security cameras, my understanding, there is, um, I don't, I don't believe, but don't quote me on this, um, I don't believe there's any kinda service fee for, that I'm aware of at this time, but we can get those.
They have a, a six dollar a month fee, I think, when you start having the cameras or something.
Okay, just to go into their software. And that would be amazing. Yeah, basically.
And then, uh, there's a Bluetooth application that goes with them that allows you to adjust settings.
Yeah, and I, and I know that, I know we're telling you a lot about the applications, please don't think you have to have all these applications.
No, but I mean, there's a few spots that we really need security cameras that we have issues with, and I think it's awesome, my deal. Yeah, I think it'll only be, it'll only be better, you know.
Tie into the solar grid?
It is, this is...
Or whatever you...
Oh, yes, or the, the solar powers at all the...
It'd just be a wireless connection between, and one AM, one.
They can put point-to-point, yeah, on everything.
If you made a list of the cities, like, the problems the city's trying to solve, there's probably a handful of those problems that applications that tie into this pole can, can solve for. For example, last mile wifi or cellphone coverage, you can work with your telecom provider, put an antenna up here, and it enhances the strength of the, um, the connection. So, you know, for, for somebody like me that's on the road all the time, to be able to stop at that park on a nice day and work there when I'm heading north or south through Clinton, that'd be amazing.
I remember living in the country, and two houses down, one of my neighbors had cable internet, and the guy between us wouldn't get it, and so I had DSL, and, you know, it was like, come on, man, let's do it.
I mean, you know, in the example, you know, me stopping at the park, you know, I'm working for a little bit, I'm probably gonna have lunch in Clinton, and I'm gonna pay a tax that day in Clinton. So, it, this helps on many levels, uh, from a financial perspective. I mean, being grid, grid-independent, uh, you're not gonna have an electric bill, so whatever you're paying for those, you've got the cost of the project, and then you're basically paying, you know, after that, you're saving money on the backend.
Additionally, the way we're proposing this is, you know, these are just standalone poles all over. You can have them wired, if you like, and have a microgrid built that feeds one of your buildings, so that in emergency, the solar can send power to your building.
So, are you guys familiar with microgrids, how those work? I mean, basically, if the grid goes down, you've got power for essential functions. So, the fire department or the chief web is already left, but, you know, let's say the grid goes down, all the lights are out, these lights are gonna still function, and, and, um, if you tie into a microgrid, you have your own grid that you own, now you can power essential functions for the police, EMTs, fire chief, um, that's, that's a different level, that's, that's like stage two of the project, but it starts by having these lights that generate power, and that power can be transferred and power the applications.
One of the biggest advantages I see is for some, Mr. Charles, like he said, I don't care how new the light is, how easy, you take it back to shop and you don't, you have to order something that comes out of Sioux City, and the next one's in, and you just can't get that model anymore. If you think ahead and get something that's, can be maintained simply, that's good for thirty years from now.
Yeah, we're out there to the point now that I can get parts, I mean, and when one of those fancy lights gets knocked over, it's done, I mean, it's...
Like that, I mean, that, that picture there, you're saying the solar's wrapped around that?
This is, this is the solar right here.
Two-inch pillar beam or so, four-inch beam?
Yeah.
The thick part of it is solar.
And it's probably like standard twenty-year life or something?
Yeah, so most solar panels generally are a thirty-year asset, um, they will lose a little bit of power generation each year, but, um, you know, they're valued as a thirty-year asset. They don't stop working at thirty years, they're just, they don't produce quite as much.
Is that part of the pole, or is that a sleeve on the pole?
That's a big question, so, on this part, I mean, the pole, this is a new installation right here, but if there are poles, I, I wouldn't recommend using the ones in the park, just because of the floods, they're so short, right? You wanna get those up so that the worst thing you gotta do is, you know, have...
I wanna save them, I wanna use, no, I don't wanna use them, I'm sure nobody here knows.
But, you know, for example, the lights on the road that you've got currently, if you wanna keep those, I mean, obviously, you need streetlights, those are not streetlights, those are walking path lights, so they're not really lighting the road, which is, if I understand what you're trying to accomplish, if you wanted to keep those for the lighting path, though, you can retrofit poles with the solar and the battery packs all at the top. Um, they, DOT's doing a lot of that, they've got big streetlights, and they're taking them off the grid, wrapping those poles, and...
I say in certain spots, if they're dexter, they look good, fine, but most of them, when you start trying to save, it's just like we did our twenty-eight lights that we end up paying forty-something thousand for, they all match, they're uniform, they look good. But when you start trying to put them on somebody's telephone pole, it's, it's terrible.
Short answer is, yes, you can change that solar.
That's, I mean, that's parts that will be damaged or whatever, you know.
One thing I got for y'all, if we did do a little pilot deal, they come back and say, we can do this for this amount, and you'll have it from then on, you keep it or whatever. If you don't like it, don't call us back anymore, just write the check. Where would you want it? He mentioned the little park, I didn't, at first didn't think that was a good idea, you know, thought that's better, it's pretty good. I come through there last night, it was extremely dark, and it's hard to...
Well, we do anything, I say we do the big part, it's the most-used facility we have. I mean, it, it is covered with people all the time, and as far as the wifi, it'll, people come in and eat lunch and everything, it, it, like I said, it'd be nice to come in with somebody out of state or something.
My reason for that, it wouldn't be, I don't know where it'll come in, just sticker shock, you know, I mean, do the big part up.
Well, even...
Or, or maybe certain spot on, maybe around the, you pick it, you know, I, I'm open wherever, I mean, we got, we got a little time to decide.
That's what he's saying, is this is a pretty novel technology, I mean, it is proven, it's used by DOT, so, I mean, it's, they wouldn't buy it in places that...
It's on US government installations.
Yeah, it's on military ones.
Yeah, our biggest problem is the backside, if we can work from the backside towards the front, 'cause we got voltage so far, and the lines are stretched out so far that once we get the backside, you could probably maintain the front part where you have some voltage. So you start at the back and work your way towards the front.
Well, I'm sure there's an option that you could, you know, do the whole part and do the kiddie park, bring us bids for both pieces, and then we could come back and say, well, we, we could do this amount, so what if we did this whole back row?
Or if like, or if, well, I like, if you recommended poles every fifty feet, we might could, since it's solar, it doesn't have to tie into anything, do every hundred feet, and then if we don't wanna come back, put it, you know, the next one's in the fifty...
I'll be down there, you know, actually, I'm in Craig Hill, I didn't think, I usually think in reverse, I didn't think about that.
What's the typical, what's the typical spacing between poles on like the walking trail?
We've got, I mean, I'll let Robert talk to this, but, um, the vendor we work with, our partner we work with, we've laid out, we've, we've, we've done some high-level preliminary pricing already, and on that point, we tested that pricing against standard, um, poles. You would think this would be more expensive, right? There are a lot of technology here, but without all the conduit and all the digging, it was about a third or quarter of the cost of traditional lighting.
Yeah, I think I've got a bid in here similar for doing the whole walkpath, new trenches, new conduit, new wires, everything, but their biggest concern was the electric, so I was gonna have to come in and either pull in off another transformer or have another pole set and bring some more power in, 'cause you can't push electric a quarter of a mile and still have the same voltage that you have when you start.
All that goes away, or is this...
I like the solar, I like the fact of the security cameras.
And to answer your question, the distance, um, so, you wanna speak to that?
Going from the kiddie park, you know, under the bridge, wa, following the walking path, doing the whole park, I think we were somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, like sixty lights, um, there.
And that's tested with some photovoltaic and...
Yes, sir, single, well, single-arm pole, um, I believe the whole pole is about twenty feet, uh, with four feet, you know, twenty percent of it in the ground, and, so you have sixteen feet above ground, um, so...
What would be the bottom of the solar panel from the ground?
Uh, so if you go back a couple of slides, Donnie, right there, uh, so, that, I think it's like a seven or eight-foot, uh, wrap on those, so it should be, you know, if you stand up like this, might touch it.
And then, and I know our team looked, and we thought it was best to put them on concrete bases, um, again, considering the flood, you're gonna get that flooding again, and we wanna make sure it's high enough up, up to avoid vandalism. Uh, Charles, this right here has a three M film on it, so no dust, no, no accumulation. Like, if you have a flat solar panel, that's gonna get dirty and it's gonna reduce capture. The way this is designed is it's self-cleaning, and you're getting it three sixty all the way around the pole.
You're saying it would be one of the two on either side of the center?
Uh, yes, or the one above the little CFL curlicue light, that's the one, that's what it would look like.
Are there, are there any areas of the park that shade is a concern?
Oh, yeah, I mean, by the creek, but we, you know, like, when we were doing our preliminary pricing, I mean, the mayor and I talked, and this is your project, so our goal is to drive the cost down, so we wanna look with you guys at, does it make sense for the city to clear some areas? Does it make sense for us to do it? Now, if it's just tree trimming, there's a section of the path, it's gonna have to be trimmed back some, but those trees don't need to be removed. Um, the mayor just mentioned that it'd be nice if we could see that, people can go down, there's a little section that kids go down and fish, there's a few more of those.
But, yeah, shade is a concern in some areas.
Well, there's one, yeah, whether the solar will be able to power with, with trees.
Yeah, if it's too shady, you know, it'll get charged and...
There are some pretty good gaps around, and there's spots to place the lights, um, but, yeah, there, there is some concern with shade in some areas.
Just one section there at the, uh, like, when you're coming from the square.
Near the perimeter area.
Yeah, no, I, I thought it was the, as you come from the square, and you walk past the kiddie park, and walk under the bridge, and walk around, some trees are hanging over, but they need to be trimmed back anyways. Once you do that, you're...
Getting dribbled every time I trim them. They, they accuse me of crank murder.
Now you got an excuse.
Every time I trim them, I get...
Timber stand approved.
I mean, you can see in this slide, I mean, this, this is basic, I mean, it's not the light we're proposing, I mean, we could do this light, I mean, again, it's your project, if you don't like what we propose, we can redesign those lights, but you see the concrete base, it's in a park, you know, those concrete bases could be taller or shorter.
Would that double one like that, if it was turned, you know, the direction of the walking path where it shined both ways, would that cover more ground?
I mean, you're trying to go down the path, so, I mean, there's certainly some areas where the double would work, like when it bends off towards the baseball field, maybe you wanna hit two different spots, so...
I think if, what you're talking about is having it to where the lights are along the path and shooting down.
Right.
And so, if you're trying to throw the light that way, and you have it tilted up too high, it may cause issues with glare, where people are walking into the light and having trouble seeing.
Yeah, I think that one on the right, the overhang looking down, probably, and if there is a low spot that you had to have a taller pole, you know, you know about where your flood comes out, I would get, I think, for the most part, I think they'd get it all out, you know, it'd be, yeah.
What are them low deals? Were they eight, ten foot off the ground? Yeah, and, I mean, the park usually, I mean, the deepest of it in it was about eight feet. No, I mean, those, the lights are down there now, what are they, off the ground? The globe out?
About twelve feet, we have to stand...
So it's gonna be four foot above that even?
Yeah.
So it's gonna, it's gonna spread light out, fall there.
And even if we had to build a base up, to get them that much higher off the ground?
Anyway, I just, you know, I just wanted to get this concept out here and see if y'all are willing to look at that, I, I think it's a really good idea, and the, the big part, people can see, feel safer... But a big thing for the city and for the parks department, street department, since they're one, is time of maintaining something that they know it's going to bog them down into hours and hours and hours and still have not a very good result.
This is one of the things that I, I, I like. I don't know, I mean, the flood sensors are great, they tell you, but I mean, you're going to know if you have a flood. But this particular note here, producing natural light, I'm a small town kid and I love outdoor spaces. I do not, you know, I'm one of those people in my office, I like to turn the lights off because I like natural light. I like LED lights because I still feel like I'm out in the nature, natural spaces. Opposed to having some floodlight glaring on me and now I don't even want to be there anymore. You know, I want that, you know, our idea was that we want that part to be accentuated, not changed. Um, getting to the end here, one of the things I want you to know, I mentioned that in our preliminary pricing, we've done internally, traditional lighting versus this type of lighting, um, we're looking at a third to a quarter of the cost of traditional lighting. Um, the Inflation Reduction Act reduces that further in the end for you guys. Um, IRA and, and Gandy can talk more in detail about this. We help uh, provide the engineering information for cities and our clients so that they can get these credits. Uh, but I know what he told me is you guys are, should be eligible from thirty to fifty percent rebate back after paying for the project. So you take that third and you take that quarter, you pay it, you get that back, a certain percentage back from the IRA. Now your total cost of the project is even lower. And there's a lot of money right now out in the federal government for this type of work.
Yeah, so uh, standard on solar that's under one megawatt, uh, you get thirty percent tax credit. So the IRA allowed tax exempt entities like cities and schools to be able to take advantage of those, you know, direct pay tax credits. Um, there's additional escalators in there that, you know, one of them is, there was some legislation a while back called a new markets tax credit. And there, if a town or zip code was considered distressed or severely distressed in that legislation, then the IRA would give you ten more percent on your solar project. Clinton qualifies as one of those areas. Then there's other one called an energy community. And it has to do with, you know, how many full-time employees work in the industry, energy industry versus some other metric. Uh, but Clinton qualifies for that too. So that's another ten percent. Um, so you know, you should be qualifying for fifty percent tax credits on this uh, project.
I mean, we're not tax accountants, but our objective is to make sure you guys, if you were to do a project with us and do this type of project, we want you to be over the moon and happy. Again, going back to sixty percent repeat customers, we're going to give you all the support to your city attorney and tax accountant so that you can get those credits in full. Um, we, it says in there, we'll meet all the requirements to achieve thirty percent tax credit. Um, that, that's all I have today. Um, on this topic, um, in November, we'd like to come back. If, if, you know, the mayor mentioned a pilot program, if you don't want to jump headfirst into a project, we can present what that preliminary pricing is. Um, pricing always goes down with more information. So as you guys engage us and say, well, what about this? And no change to that, we can adjust, the price adjusts with the scope. Um, so we can come back and go to the pricing scope, benefits, show you the layout of the park in November. Um, but if there is a particular area you would say, well, why don't we start small, War Memorial or the Square? We're happy to support you on a smaller scope as well. Um.
Cool. Uh, Donnie, Robert, thank you very much. Anybody questions or any?
You want me to go over this too?
Absolutely, yeah. We're about to get into that, I think.
Yeah, I know, I know your water department's going to get up and talk about some stuff and the mayor asked me to, you know, just share a little bit about Act six oh five. So this is nothing to do with lighting, this is water, wastewater. Um, I'm currently working with a number of cities in Arkansas, um, that, you know, we're building projects for, uh, this is affecting them. Um, Act six oh five is coming state down. Every city in the state's dealing with it. Um, essentially the state said, we're not going to be in a position to have to take over uh, water and sewer departments when they lack the funds to upgrade uh, infrastructure due to deferred maintenance. So you're gonna have to do a rate study every five years. Uh, Clinton's is in July twenty twenty six. Um, they're going to have a qualified rate study provider come in, determine your rate, they're going to take into account all your operations and maintenance, debt service, required reserves, appreciation, future capital expenditures, preparation for annual audit and other expenses that's necessary. The one that I've found that has gotten a lot of cities into trouble in Arkansas is the amount of deferred maintenance that they have. So if you've got lines in the ground that have reached their useful life, um, when they do that rate determination, they're going to say, how much is it going to cost to replace that? And are you charging your customers enough to be able to afford to replace it when it comes due? Um, then they're going to tell you to implement it. I've seen some cities go up two hundred, three hundred percent. Um, this is not a, a city-driven act, this is a state-driven act. So, um, you know, we've worked with, the cities we've worked with, our goal is to help reduce the impact of those rate increases that the state will require. Um, any questions?
No, it's, it's not the, not the water department's fault. I, you know, appreciate the fact it's a state-driven.
Yeah, there were a few, uh, a few cities that deferred the recipe. And uh, the state said, well, now you all have to do this. And, you know, beyond just the rate study, they're going to require certain amounts held in deposit. And, you know, that's a minimum of five percent. So, you know, they may say, you've got to do ten or fifteen percent. It just really depends. And uh, whatever the consultants say is what, you know, your stuff doing.
Yeah, I know, I know a little bit about the water department here and I know you have AMI and um, you, you, you have done a lot in Clinton to help reduce the impact of higher rate increases that other cities are seeing. Um, the best thing, best advice I've got to you guys is to support your water department and listen to them when they say something's breaking, something's going down. Cause if you fix it, then all of a sudden you've got more useful life. Um, but you know, it's like a car, if you don't do the oil changes, thing's not going to run.
Yeah, this is gonna, a lot of cities are going to feel this first five to ten years pretty hard. Um, and as the rate studies are going to go a lot better after you've been through a couple, because you will handle a ton of things already.
Yeah, and I'm sure you do, you're doing this, but just get ahead of it and work with the state and tell them, here's our plan. And I've seen cities say, we're going to go up this much over five years because it's best for our residents. There's lots of things you can do to reduce impact to the lowest income folks and fix things on boats. Um, and, and I know they're willing to work with you, but it's always better to have a plan and communicate it to them.
Thank you.
Guys, thanks a lot. I do appreciate it. Uh, I'll talk to the council, Charles, everybody. I'll holler at you middle of next week. I'll be down there one day. So, I know, I can find you.
We're gonna hang around.
Yeah, stick around and do whatever you gotta do. Appreciate, brings us up to uh.
I think that might be two of them.
Oh, we, did we get streets? Charles, street department?
Yeah, it's awesome. Always fun. Uh, we've been doing some mowing, uh, we're only mowing one pass because it's dry. And if it does start raining, the grass is going to be dead, so I don't want to have to do a bunch of ditch repairs. So kind of got the guys knock everything back, make it look decent with one pass.
Some of that grass is on purpose in the ditch. I know, I know, up by Danny Brown's, I've, I've talked to you and Will about that. I've got, I'm going to put a little concrete in that ditch, first chance I get.
So we're trying to get all that knocked out. I think they've got uh, quite a bit of it caught up. So we've actually pushed a bunch back. Uh, I mean, we've just been plugging it whatever we can. It's slowing down, the grass is slowing down, which is great, but I kind of fear what's coming next after all this dry spell. We've, we've got to start getting stuff ready to get leaves out and get stuff took care of. The leaves are falling faster than we can get them up, so.
All right.
Other than that.
Anything for Charles on streets? Uh, brings us to police department. Jay Murdoch is, didn't look good this morning at all. He's just worn down. So I think you have his report in front of you. Uh, incident reports over thirty-three, eight accidents on, on a traffic wave, five of them, three of them were in the parking lots. Uh, non-reportable calls, calls for service, a hundred and fifty-seven. Uh, you can look down there, eighteen alarms, warnings issued with thirty-one. I was in on one of those, but I think that was with the county. Citations issued, thirty-three, no juvenile arrests. Um, new investigations opened were six, four were closed. Arrest warrants filed were seven, et cetera. Alarm control had three calls, picked up no dogs, picked up no cats. Other thing that Jay had mentioned is uh, I think this Saturday they're going to help the county with the shooter down there, I think it's South Side. They're pretty engaged in that and they do a good job with that and uh, extra training. Still got two people in the academy, so Jay's been kind of going on fumes. Uh, entertainment district for the reunion, light turned out to reunion, but it was, went extremely well. Uh, I was going to, you know, like I say, I usually think backwards. Jay said, just block off the whole court square, it's a lot easier. And it, it went great. Everybody was very, you know, handled themselves very well, no incidents at all. Uh, felt like the police department had a handle on it and got it all good with everybody. That went really, really well. I was proud of that. Terry Hicks uh, had an ACIC audit and I'm not all that familiar, but I think that's high-tech stuff. And she passed with flying colors and got some sort of accommodation or award. So thank you, Terry, for that. Um, and I put, I can't read my writing on that. Uh, oh, we're going to have an election emergency response plan. That's to the county. City is working with the county on that. Just have visibility on election day. Uh, that'll be first uh, weekend in November. I think everyone knows when that is. But that is not much of a police report, but that's the best I can give it for Jay. I'll answer any questions if you have any. But I thought the uh, entertainment district was very uh, well, well, they were well-prepared for that and no incidents. That went great. Uh, that brings us down to water and sewer. I know we got the deal coming up, but got zoning out for you and I think Brandon's going to speak during zoning, but I'll let you go ahead and do your water and sewer report with.
Um, that one was spread during this or at the end?
I was going to do it. I, I've got it under new, new business.
I'm just going to wait to pass that out then. We'll just go from there. All right, so uh, I apologize for being late. Uh, we were trying to have our meeting and working on budget and stuff tonight and I got a little carryway. I didn't even bring everything over. I was planning on bringing. So uh, water loss, we were at twenty percent for the whole system. Uh, we were thirty-one percent on Benard and thirty-three percent on Burnt Ridge. I didn't grab that right paper, so I'm pulling that from memory. So if I'm wrong, I'm sorry. I'll make it for next month.
Make it up, Ben. Ten percent loss.
You know, I was trying to bring the stuff I wanted you guys to see and not the stuff you didn't need to see. So anyway, I apologize for not grabbing everything. Um, I did, uh, we did have several bid openings this last week. Uh, we did our, on our drinking water loans, we did two bid openings. Uh, we had the water treatment plant media filter change out. Uh, and that actually come in, come in close to a million over what we had projected. But uh, we only had one bidder for that project. And in doing that, ANRC said it was fine just having the one bidder, but uh, that bidder knew he was the only bidder. So we did have a meeting set down with him today and there was saying several things that the engineer had drew up that he had questions on. We made a few cutbacks, one being uh, conduit for the electrical. Electrical bid come in real high on it. And it, doing that, um, we agreed that we were good with Schedule eighty uh, conduit and it had been, it had put out there was stainless steel. So that saved a lot. So we met with a few agreements and they're going to give us another.
What was the bid on? I missed that.
It was on the uh, filter media at the water treatment plant, changing out all the filter media. Uh, but it come in at uh, four point five and we projected like, we'd projected about a million less than that. So, but we did get with him and part of it was, um, you know, it was a very precise bid because it had to be uh, same, it had to be material from the same company that the plant is now. So in doing that, they had to order everything and it be paid for a hundred percent when it was on site. Well, with ANRC, they don't, they do draws and they were going to have to budget that out of their pocket. So they were having to get a loan to do it and it was going to be eight percent on top of that. So we, you know, we had the money to pay for that upfront. So that was one of the things, you know, knock off a hundred thousand dollars if we pay for that upfront and stuff. So well, he's going to come back with another bid, but that was the only one that come in high. Uh, painting of the tanks, we had three tanks that come in at uh, three hundred and seventy thousand. That was lower than what we projected. Uh, that was the only two right now on the drinking water. We still have another one that would come back out on another draw. Still have like one point two left on that. And then on the clean water, on your wastewater side, we had three openings today. We had the wastewater improvements at the wastewater plant. And it come in at three sixty, we projected four, so it was real close. Uh, manhole uh, replacement and pipe bursting, it come in at two point one. We were right there at two point two projecting. And then um, the big one, the, well, it actually come in lower, but it's still the major thing to be done is the river crossing over here where it's exposed in the river, uh, boring that bluff. Uh, we had two bids on that. Uh, the lower bidder come in at nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. I hope he knew what he was doing. Uh, it was a million dollar difference on the next bid.
Little difference.
So, like I said, these weren't awarded, they got to be approved through ANRC. Everything's got to be looked at, but there was a million dollar difference on that. Um, on that bid. So.
Any questions, anything else for Will on that before we get to, you can get under, I want to get.
But that's, that's about all I had to report. Uh, no, no updates on B Branch. Um, they've not met, so I've not been able to have a meeting with them.
All right, uh, we'll get to the uh, ordinance here in just a little bit. Uh, anything else for Will? Bring us down to zoning department, Tim Clark.
Um, we give y'all an update on our flood maps. Um, it's been kind of a nightmare. I had a heat and air class a couple of weeks ago and a guy from another town said, we, we need new flood maps. Where do we start? And I said, well, I'd start with a prayer meeting and hope for the best. Um.
December.
I uh.
December.
Yeah. I uh, had called a few months ago to ask for an update where we were, cause we're in the sixth year of a five-year project and uh, FEMA said, well, that, that project's been suspended. I had a little bit of a panic attack and uh, I said, well, and they gave me a couple of reasons, budgetary problems, which, no. And then basically being Richard, FEMA, the engineer, ANRC, he was on a Zoom call. And after about thirty minutes, I said, okay, what you're telling me is FEMA has certain standards and these standards change each year. So if you've got a five-year process and you do your study year two and three, in year five, when they're going to do their part, your standards, you don't meet current standards. So if it's a year by year process, you're never going to meet current standards. And long story short, they said, well, for another eight or ten thousand dollars, we could probably make this work. And I said, well, that's not going to happen. We, we've paid our part. And they said, well, if we start our part now, if you do come up with the money, then we can get you some maps in two or three years. And I said, okay, that's not going to work either. And I uh, and I do want to say on the record that I do appreciate Senator Cotton's office, Senator Bozeman's office, Rick Beck for helping us out and putting a little pressure on them. Um, I got a call from Whit Monique with ANRC at the beginning of the week. And she said, we do have, ANRC has some funds that FEMA allocated to us for something, I don't know what it was. And she said, I'm going to request that they let us reallocate those funds and use them for uh, the city of Clinton's flood maps. And she called me this afternoon and she said, they are going to let us do that and use those funds to complete our project. And of course, my next question was, are you fixing to tell me two or three years? And she said, no, it'll be, we should have you maps in six to eight months. So, not great. It's been a nightmare, but there is some light at the end of the tunnel. I know I get calls all the time. It's killing people. They don't, I mean, insurance rates have gone through the roof. I feel their pain and it's ridiculous, but at least I'm going to live to, hopefully live to see it happen.
Well, Bozeman and Cotton and French Hill and Beck, they all, they did. They, whatever they did, it helped. And appreciate Whit going back and just keep digging around there because uh, I, like I said, I don't, I didn't send it to him. We paid her sixty-two thousand dollars, y'all did a long time ago and the time's already passed on, it's long to take. I, I am more optimistic. and the time's already passed on, it's longer than it take, but I, I am more optimistic than I've been, that's all I'll say. I was shocked when you said six to eight months, cause I was waiting here two years and have a meltdown.
Yeah, I, I, I really thought she would say, "Well, it is gonna be another three years," but, um.
I, I, yeah, I have, I have no answer when people tell me I'm a liar, yes, I am.
Well, like I told Richard, I hate feeling helpless, but you can't, you, you just can't hardly push them. I, I mean, the senator's office has helped us push them a little bit, but they're difficult to negotiate.
They did something, it's all they, all they.
You got Florida and all these people, and then you got Clinton, Arkansas, and they're like, "Yeah, whatever." But, anyway, we, we're, we're, we're gonna get it done. Um, I talked to, uh, the owner of the, uh, old KFC building. He's wanting to get going, opened up in the next two to three weeks. He said he's gonna have a pre-opening and invite the city council and the fire department, and he's gonna feed all of us so we can, uh, sample their food, and I, and I'm all about that. Um, our weather sirens, I think we've kinda got that halfway ironed out. Me, DL, and Safety Comm, we put a new encoder in. It's, seems to be doing what it's supposed to be doing. We've always had a signal problem getting a signal to that, uh, one by Grace Church. And now DL's got a handheld radio, we tried it out Wednesday, and, and it's working, so you can set that one off, uh, from, uh, he can set it off from his house. And if you're in town, you can set all the rest of them off with it. So, hopefully, one of the problems we have is we're on the same frequency as the sheriff's department, the nine-one-one call center. Um, so, really the only way to one hundred percent, cause if it sends the signal and there's somebody else using it, we, we seem to get blocked out. Sometimes we have to sit there and hit it two or three times, and then it finally goes. So, really the only way to a hundred percent fix it is to apply for our own frequency, which DL mentioned he was going to do when the new fire station gets built, to get our own frequency, so. Um, the, uh, the stakeout is, uh, this Saturday, so if you have a pre-ordered a steak, you can certainly just drive by and get one, we should have fifty or sixty, uh, extras. And the next weekend's the Metro Bass Club Tournament down at the park, about four-thirty. Uh, we'll be cooking for those guys, there'll probably be about a hundred of them, so if you wanna come by and, and say hey to them, they're a great bunch of guys, and there'll be a bunch of new ones there. Uh, also, we're, uh, starting on the, uh, Christmas in Clinton, December the seventh. You should see some things coming out online and some flyers around town. And would love to see the, the city council have their own float in the parade, so y'all can all sit up there and throw things to the crowd, and they can throw things at you, so.
All the crowds of cars, who can ride.
Okay, the fire, sure.
Scare on the square, then immediately following, that's the Moonshine Festival, so, anyway, that's all I got.
Yeah, it's, uh, stakeout the twelfth, the nineteenth, and twentieth is the Quad State Bass Anglers, but it's a national meet. Scare on the square is the thirty-first, moonshine, November first and second. Election returns the fifth, of course, that election day, and then December seventh is Santa Claus is coming to town, so that'll be big.
And I'm, I think some of these guys in the Metro Bass Cup Tournament are gonna come back and be in our Christmas in Clinton parade.
Hope so, thank you, anything for Tim? Brandon Dunn, you finally get a good talk and hand this out, who's trying to get annexed into Clinton, and I'll let you.
So, I, I know about half the folks in the room, I'm, uh, Brandon Dunn, CEO of, uh, Natural State Processing, Cypress Valley Meat Company. Uh, Carrie Harrington, she's our executive, uh, office director, she's the one that keeps us all straight when we're, uh, running to and fro, trying to get things done. But, uh, we actually have six different locations where we process, uh, meats, uh, across the state and then over into Oklahoma, but we have two here in town. We've got the Clinton Custom Shop up there, North on sixty-five, and then we lease space out of the Global Foods Building. Been there right at seven years, is that right, Carrie?
Yep.
So, we've actually had a live poultry processing operation in the back of that building for about seven years. Um, proud to say, half the city of Clint, Clinton doesn't know what, that we're there, uh, which, uh, if you run a poultry operation, that means you're doing a good job. Uh, but we, uh, we run about a half a million birds, uh, through that. Uh, these two locations in town, uh, collectively employ between sixty-five and seventy people, depending on the time of the year, uh, and it supports about three hundred and sixty farmers, uh, unique farmers. Um, so, that is part of our mission, uh, being a strategic partner to farmers and, uh, also a destination employ, uh, um, place to employ our employees. So, across our whole network, we service about thirty-one hundred farmers and employ about a hundred and seventy people. So, about forty percent of those are tied to the town of Clinton. So, I guess it's been about a year ago when we purchased the land there, so.
Yeah, more than a year.
Just a little bit over a year. We purchased, uh, fifty acres, two and a half miles south of our current location, just almost in the Chopetal area. So, when you look at the, uh, uh, town of Clinton, um, that fifty acres, uh, uh, the, uh, city is basically, goes completely around it, it's not annexed into, to the city. So, uh, we felt like it would be advantageous to annex that property in, and what we were hoping to do is take the highway frontage, which we really don't need for our future project, uh, zone it as, uh, um, commercial, uh, in case we wanted to, uh, sell it to generate some revenue for our other project, and then, uh, the back portion of it, uh, the majority of it, uh, as commercial. And, and our intention, and we, I think we've shared some site layouts and stuff like that, but our intention is basically to leave tree line completely around the, the plan as a, uh, noise, a shelter, things like that. And then, um, uh, there's an old house there, that would be kind of the main entry, and then into the plant area. Um, you guys may have seen some news too, we were a, uh, meat and poultry expansion plan grant recipient, um, for building a new plant. Um, um, that award was for three point seven million dollars. Um, and the entire cost of the project's somewhere around twelve to thirteen. So, we're very much in the phase right now of trying to, um, raise the capital, the other nine million dollars, to see if this project, uh, is doable right now. Uh, you guys obviously know with, uh, um, the inflationary environment, interest rates, uh, things like that, it, it's kinda, it's a, still a pretty tough lift for us. Uh, USDA puts you on about a ninety-day clock to figure it out. Uh, we're about out of those ninety days, actually we are, we filed for an extension, not sure if that'll be granted. Uh, what we do know is that eventually, that is our plan, is to build on that location. It might be a timing issue, might not happen this round, but we still feel like, uh, getting the property annexed in and doing the proper steps, uh, going forward, and it would provide some additional Highway sixty-five frontage for the city for, you know, future businesses, whatever that look like, so.
Okay, anyway, if, I didn't know, Brandon, if, tonight, I just wanna make everybody aware of this, and then I planned on, I think I may have wrote on your information, November, December, there's other places that, you know, may, may annex in also, and I had people say you already did all at one time. It's not putting you in a bind, is it, that?
It's, it's not currently, uh, if we, if we, uh, figured out the project tomorrow, it would take us about, uh, eighteen to twenty months to complete a build. Uh, so, um, you know, there's obviously gonna be some, uh, tax advantages that the city's gonna work with us on if we were to be able to locate that plant, so certainly we'd want it done before that. Um, probably the only thing that would be an advantage to us, and your timeline doesn't affect us as if, you know, if, if that highway frontage was attractive to somebody to, to where we could recoup a little bit of.
Uh, it wouldn't be over, I'd plan, but December, you know, the latest.
I think that fits our timeline fine, but just wanted to make sure that we got it in front of you guys. Any, uh, questions about either the project or the, the rest of our company and what, what we do?
Is it gonna be a twenty-four hour production plan?
Uh, it, it would, but, uh, kinda the way we, uh, run the current process would probably be a mirror image. We, we do our harvest only on day shift, uh, for the live birds, and then typically you have a, uh, fewer headcount on second shift that are, is basically processing and packing, uh, and then you would have a, a third shift sanitation. Um, the size of the building we're looking at, you know, you're talking, um, um, with the volumes, we would probably grow from a team of fifty in our current environment, that, you know, if we filled that plant, you'd be looking at, uh, eighty people, uh, probably four to five of those on third shift. Uh, you'd probably have, uh, twenty-five of those on second shift in the bulk on days.
And then as far as, uh, noise, stuff like that, is it gonna be like sewer? Cause I, I live right across the street from it, and my neighbors have absolutely asked me a lot of questions, and I probably, there's no way I can get them all at you tonight, but as far as noise, smell, stuff like that.
Uh, not a lot of noise, um, related to the process, um, um, at all. Um, um, we obviously will have off all to deal with, um, some of the things that we have built in the plan is, uh, having a separate building that's, uh, refrigerated in order to, uh, house those materials that are not usable, um, you know, feathers and the parts you throw away until they can be picked up. Uh, so, and we kinda follow that process now, the only, the smell that we have now's intermittent, and it's really when the, um, rendering company picks up, there's a, about a thirty-minute window where there can be. Uh, we think where we're gonna locate, keeping the tree line, things like that, um, um, really our goal is to, uh, if you don't know that we're supposed to be there, you don't know we're there, uh, and we're trying to design the plan in that fashion.
So, I mean, I didn't know, we annex in, and we have an initial, there's gonna be an initial zoning. Obviously, part of this is gonna be industrial, industrial zoning use, and it's kinda out, outside the industrial zone. So, I guess my point would be, that's probably a conversation that we could have about, like, obviously it buffers onto a residential area. So, it might be something we can sit down and all have a conversation and, and talk about what that would look like, and sounds like, sounds like a setback, is it something you're already planning anyway?
It is, and I, I don't know if you guys got the materials, anything we can plan. Um, we're, we're working with Nab Holt's, uh, construction, so they, they recommended where to put it, but if it needs to shift a little bit for, you know, those type of things, I think could.
Maybe some reasonable lighting restrictions, so that's not just, so the lighting is downlighted and not gonna be, not, the residents maybe don't know it's there, and, and, we, we all grew up going to school right next to a chicken plant, so I think we're all somewhat sensitive to the smell, but hopefully that's.
Yeah, and I think scale-wise, uh, you know, I don't know the volume that went through the, uh, chicken plant up by the school, but I'm, I'm gonna guess that they were, uh, probably, uh, running a hundred thousand birds a week. Um, so, you know, we're talking about one point three, five million birds a year. Um, and so it's a much more, uh, low-scale niche processing. Um, you do see, we tend to see, um, you know, um, one-ton pickups pulling trailers with our birds, not semis. Uh, you know, we would be a little bit bigger, you could have a semi or two in and out, but just the, the volume in and of itself makes the, uh, experience of being around it a, a little bit more, um, attractive.
And it will be, you said it will be live birds?
It is live birds, and, and we are doing that now, uh, and of course, we're, um, a stone's throw from Walmart, so, uh, you know.
And pretreatment, that's obviously come up in water, sewer bore.
That would be part of our plan as well, um, uh, baked into it.
Alright, Brandon, thanks, anything else, anybody for Brandon or Carrie? Thank you guys for enduring the whole meeting.
I'll, I'll leave a few cards here too, in case anybody on the council has follow-up, or if anytime you would wanna come to, uh, current operation or one of our other operations that, uh, just out of curiosity, we, uh, do a lot of, uh, show and tell, so.
White Sox set a record, bad word. Just, just curious, any update as far as the transa, the transaction or current building?
Yeah, so, uh, company named Paleo Valley, um, they also have a protein division called Wild Pastures, and we've done some business with them before, so they're, they're kinda in the space of a lot of people we serve, which is, uh, you know, uh, better for, for you, better for pasture, uh, direct-to-consumer type meats. Um, and, uh, they're getting their operation up and running, uh, it's basically gonna be, uh, Paleo Valley does a lot of stuff in the health and wellness, including vitamins, and then they've got the meat division that, you know, no antibiotics, raised on pasture, that type of thing. Uh, and that's gonna be kind of an aggregation point for them. I think Paleo Valley is about a sixty-million-dollar company total, uh, so, uh, most of their products are gonna be coming in there and going out to other DCs. Uh, so, uh, you currently have, uh, Global Foods in there that, uh, I think they're intending on being there about another eighteen months as they build out their other project. Uh, then you obviously have Natural State Processing, and, uh, Paleo Valley is just starting to get their feet under themselves and building out pick-pack lines, um. The bulk of our operation in the back has really no effect on what they're trying to do. Um, we, uh, uh, and it's probably affected Carrie and her team the most, uh, um, we had the luxury of a pretty large area to aggregate by the freezer, and we've had to compress a little bit, so. Uh, but they do seem very open to, uh, working with us, uh, uh, short-term or even long-term. So, you know, if we can't figure out, uh, the, the new build, just because it's cost prohibitive, uh, they've talked about, uh, you know, how could we segregate this plant to where we could be there long time term, but not cross functions? And right now, the only place we're really crossing is our products in a package or crossing with their products in a package, so, but working well together, they're, they're good folks.
You're getting a lot of breathing in so far. That's good. Good deal, anything else for Brandon?
Are they doing meat processing there now?
They're not doing any processing. Um, if they do anything, it'll actually probably be through us, and what they may run into is like, they get product in, they got a busted package or something like that, there may be a, once a month where we, uh, repack some product for them, but they're not bringing in any live bird or even any box meat to process.
Most of theirs, it sounds like distribution.
It's distribution, yeah, they're gonna have probably a team of twelve people that are either selling, sending out pallets to other DCs or literally putting their products in a box to go direct to customer. Yeah. Alright, we appreciate you guys having us, I'll, I'll just leave a stack of these just so you guys have a direct contact with us if you've got any questions.
Thanks a lot, guys, appreciate you coming. Uh, brings us down to unfinished business, we have none. New business is an ordinance proposal for twenty-twenty-four Clinton water and sewer rate, uh, increase. Uh, I'll entertain a motion in seconds to put that on.
No, please, we're emailed out, does anybody want a hard copy?
Uh, you can go ahead and pass them out, I just wanna get a motion second to put it on the first reading.
So moved, second.
Do you have the direct vote?
Chasing.
And this is the one.
Lynch, Pissel.
Yeah, I was hoping that's why I brought you one.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Okay, this is, and I'll let, you'll take over, Barry, introduce it, of what, what it is, what we're doing. Then I'll read it as far as I can get, then I'll make it, somebody jump in.
Tap out?
Uh, yeah, I probably will. But, uh, as we talked about earlier, this is something that's mandated, not popular. Will, you wanna inter, say anything about this before we read it, or just read it and then discuss it?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to go, I mean, we did have several options. We had two different, uh, set-down workshops with the city council and the water board. Uh, we had a goal that ANRC had established that we were, we were shy on, you know? So, all the options we come up with, all, all equaled the three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars that they said we were coming up shy to repay our debt. So, in that, we had the several options on debt service, um, rate increases for wastewater. Um, you know, that's where our flaw was, is we were lacking on sewer, so. Um, and this is what we had come up with, this is what the board voted on, was sent to the city council. Ryan Bowman did all the lead work on the ordinance, so.
Okay, I'll start out reading this, then we can discuss it to Brandon.
Let us know if you need help reading it.
Yeah, I will, or you, you'll probably let me know. This is an ordinance amending sections ten point zero eight point zero one and ten point oh eight point oh two of the Clinton municipal code prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Clinton, Arkansas, the city owns and operates water and sewer facilities, which water and sewer facilities are operated as one interrelated municipal undertaking, the system. And whereas the existing rates for services of water facilities of the system are codified in sections ten point zero eight point oh. are codified in sections ten point zero eight point oh one of the Clinton municipal code. And whereas existing rates for services of the sewer facilities of the system are codified in section ten point oh eight oh two of the Clinton municipal code. And where it, whereas it is necessary for the city to amend sections ten point oh eight point oh one and ten point oh eight oh two of the municipal code in order to increase rates charged for services of the system. Now there be, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Clinton, Arkansas, section one, ten point zero eight point zero of the Clinton municipal code is hereby amended to read as follows. Ten point oh eight oh one water rates, the following rates and charges which the city council of the city of Clinton, Arkansas hereby finds and declares are fair, reasonable and minimum rates to be charged for water services be and are they hereby fixed as rates to be rendered by the system. A, monthly rates effective as of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. One, city, city commercial inside city limit customers with three quarter inch meters, first one thousand gallons, twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. All over a thousand gallon, gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Number two, Clinton residential inside city limits customers with three quarter inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, twenty-four dollars and twelve cents. And all over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five, uh, cents per thousand gallons. Number three, Clinton commercial outside city limit customers with three quarter inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, thirty-seven dollars, fifty-two cents. All over one thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Clinton residential outside city limit customers with three quarter inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. And all over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Number five, Clinton customers with one inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents. All over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Clinton customers with two inch meters. Number six, the first one thousand gallons, one hundred three dollars and thirty-three cents. And all over one thousand gallons is eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Number seven, Clinton customers with three inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, one hundred forty-eight dollars, seven cents. And all over one thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Number eight, Clinton customers with four inch meters, the first thousand gallons, two hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-four cents. And all over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand. Number nine, Clinton customers with six inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, two hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. And all over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Burt Ridge and Denard customers, the first one thousand gallons, thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. All over one thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Number eleven, oil and gas customers with three quarter inch meters, the first one thousand gallons, thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. All over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. Number twelve, Bee Branch Water Association, four dollars and seventeen cents per thousand gallons. Thirteen, Van Buren County Water Association, four dollars, twenty-two cents per thousand gallons. And number fourteen, Clinton Industrial Customers, the first one hundred thousand gallons, six hundred ten dollars and fifty-one cents. All over one hundred thousand gallons, five dollars and ten cents per thousand gallons. B, the Clinton outside customers will consist of pre, previously designated outside and new line customers. Somebody take over.
C, the water rates in A one through A eleven and A fourteen above shall be increased by three percent on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And on each December sixteenth thereafter through, including December sixteenth, twenty twenty-nine. The water rates in A twelve and A thirteen shall, above, shall be increased by five percent on January first, twenty twenty-five. Each customer who connects with the water facilities, this is D, each customer who connects with the water facilities of the system shall pay a meter deposit as follows. Residential, one hundred dollars water and fifty dollars sewer. Commercial, one hundred fifty dollars water and one hundred dollars sewer. E, there should be a tapping fee for each customer who thereafter connects with and uses the water facilities of this system. The fee shall be charged based on the cost of materials and labor required to install the tap. F, in addition to all other charges, each meter which measures water usage for water processed and sold by the city of Clinton, regardless of the entity which provides and/or bills for such usage directly or indirectly, shall be subject to a three dollar charge. The proceeds from this charge shall be used solely to retire the indebtedness related to the purchase and installation of the water clarifier. This charge shall be for each meter and is not related to any base rate or surplus rate water service. G, in the event any premises are disconnected from the water facilities of the system, the customer concerned prior to reconnection shall pay all delinquent charges, together with a reconnection charge for each reconnection of the premises to the system as follows. Thirty-five dollars for customers outside the city limits excluding Denard customers, fifty dollars for Denard customers and twenty dollars for customers inside the city limits. All customers inside and outside the city shall pay a sixty dollar after hour service charge. H, none of the facilities or services afforded by the water system shall be furnished without a charge being made therefore. I, the operation of the water system shall be on a fully metered basis with a meter installed at each water connection. All bills for water services shall be rendered in the net amount due. If any water bill is not paid on or before the fifteenth day of the month, after the bill shall be rendered, a ten percent penalty shall be added. And if any bill is not paid by the twenty-fifth day of the month, after the bill shall be rendered, water service may, water service may be disconnected. There should be no dual connection, that is, there shall not be more than one structure on a single meter. J, the city shall provide an additional water meter to customers for irrigation purposes only. Those water customers who already have a service line and meter may request such an additional irrigation water meter from the city. Said meter shall be placed on a separate water line, which shall be installed at the customer's expense and which will tap into pre-existing service line. K, no sewer charge shall be levied or collected by the city in connection with water passing through the separate water meter used solely for irrigation purposes. L, the city shall charge certain costs for the installation of the irrigation water meter to the customer. These costs for separate meter as described there herein within the city of Clinton shall include a service charge of seven dollars and fifty cents, a tapping fee equal to the cost of materials and labor required to install the tap, and a deposit of a hundred dollars. M, if any water customer who has an additional water meter for irrigation purposes knowingly uses the water passing through said meter for any other purpose, he or she shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and if convicted, shall pay a fine of ten dollars. Each day of such unlawful water, unlawful use of water through the additional meter as described herein shall constitute a separate offense. N, beginning on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in addition to all other charges, each meter which measures water usage for water processed and sold by the city of Clinton, regardless of the entity which provides and/or bills for such usage directly or indirectly, shall be subject to a six dollar charge. The proceeds from this charge shall be used solely to retire indebtedness secured by revenues of the system. Section two, section ten point oh eight point oh two of the city municipal code is hereby amended to read as follows. Ten point oh eight point oh two sewer rates. The following rates and charges within which the city council of the city of Clinton, Arkansas hereby finds and declares are fair, reasonable and necessary minimum rates to be charged for sewer services be, and they are hereby fixed as rates to be rendered by the system. Sewer rates effective as of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, for each additional residential customer served by the system. First one thousand gallons or less, twenty-three dollars, ninety-six cents. All over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. For each commercial customer served by the system, first thousand gallons or less, fifty-five dollars and two cents. All over a thousand gallons, eight dollars and five cents per thousand gallons. For each industrial customer served by the system, the first one hundred thousand gallons or less, one thousand and ten dollars and fifty-one cents. All over a hundred thousand gallons, five dollars and ten cents per thousand gallons. The sewer rates above shall be increased by three percent on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five and on each December sixteenth through and including December sixteenth, twenty twenty-nine. Monthly billings for the sewer system shall be made with and as part, as a part of the water system billings and payment of water service shall not be accepted without the payment for sewer system service. No customer shall be allowed to connect to the sewer system unless such customer is also connected to the water system. None of the facilities or services afforded by the sewer system shall be furnished without a charge being made therefore. There shall be tapping, there shall be tapping fee for each customer who thereafter connects with and uses the sewer facilities of the system. The fee for sewer taps shall be as follows. Sewer taps, residential, four hundred and fifty dollars. Commercial, industrial, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Section three, after adoption, this ordinance shall be posted in the following places in the city. City Hall, city Clinton Water and Sewer Department, Walmart, Cash Saver and Van Buren County South Annex. Section four, the provisions of this ordinance are separable. And if a section, phrase or provision shall be declared invalid, such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the ordinance. Section five, all ordinance and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section six, is hereby, as, ascertained and declared that bonds secured by the revenues of the system should be issued as soon as possible and that such bonds cannot be issued until the rates for services of the system are established as provided herein. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health and safety shall be enforced and take effect immediately upon and after its passage.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? Do you need to read that certificate or? No, uh, okay, is there any discussion or any comment?
So as far as the options, like in the meeting notes, the only thing that's gonna go up other than the three percent is the six dollars on the water charge?
No, there's the minimum bill, the, the sewer, it had a minimum bill.
The, the minimums went up on some of them.
Went up.
Okay, so pretty much twenty dollars, I guess you would afford with the twenty oh six?
Yes.
And that's on everybody, whether it's grandma's ten dollar, twenty dollar water bill or?
Yeah, so you got a debt service on everybody that has water with us. That's including Burt Ridge, Denard and everything. And then if you have, uh, city sewer, if you are a residential city sewer customer, your minimum bill went up six dollars. So altogether, you're, went up twelve dollars if you're a, a water and sewer residential customer. And then if you were on that one, uh, if you were a, uh, commercial customer, it went up thirty-four ninety-one on sewer.
On the, it went up two thirty-four ninety-one.
It went, no, it went up.
It went up thirty-four ninety-one on what it is.
Yes.
So the Bee Branch Water Association deal there, is that what they charge right now? The four seven, four dollars and seventeen cents per thousand?
That's what they, that's what we charge them.
That's what we charge them, okay.
Red, so I apologize, you had to read everything?
That's fine.
Because most of this, nothing changed. It was the old ordinance and you had to read that.
You had to amend it. I, I got that, but I just.
But no, we didn't change anything. They actually, they go up five percent in January because our two wholesale customers, Van Buren County and Bee Branch Water.
This is not what they pay.
No.
That's not their rate right now.
That is what we charge them.
That's what we charge them for the water they buy from us. I got you, okay.
Now on the, if water debt service thing, will we be able to add Bee Branch to that if they're taking over?
Uh, no, they will have their own.
Yeah.
They just went up on theirs, are they gonna have to go up again?
Yes, so ANRC has not even looked at their rates yet. So this is just for Clinton. We will be running Bee Branch. Right now, I'm running Bee Branch, but when we take them over, all their rates will already be decided. ANRC will, like we had mentioned earlier with Act six oh five, they would have already looked at that. They will have their own separate, whether we choose to do a debt service with them or we change the whole rate structure, but they will have their own.
But they're already gonna be audited and have to adjust their rate before that, yeah.
And then, uh, that goes back to the, the ten million dollar project deal?
Yes, and those go along with those bids that, uh, this, these bids had to be approved and everything go before that loan closes.
But the ten million has nothing to do with Bee Branch. That, Bee Branch would all be, they all got their own deal right now and it's all a separate whole thing.
Right. And that was a, I think you said on the payoff, it was at four percent, but the payoff was twenty million over the twenty years?
Yes.
Which would be almost nine percent?
It's really close.
Or almost eight percent.
There is, they actually had a one percent, um, service charge in there also.
Cause I, I was just running some numbers on it today while I had a chance.
So you're really paying back five percent.
Yeah, and I mean, over the course of the ten million to twenty million in ten years, it's almost eight, I think it's seven.
Yeah, because the, like we talked about, they do everything a little different. So until we actually close everything, that interest is being, being put back into the.
Yeah, you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna pay interest on what you, they're gonna like, it's just like if you build a house and you got a construction loan, you don't borrow the whole two hundred thousand right up front. You borrow, you pay these bills, you get fifty thousand put in your account, well, you pay interest on that, which is low, until you have to put more in there, but you're never paying anything on that principal until you close that loan. So no matter what we do, that, when, when we get that loan, we're gonna pay interest on it until we close out the loan and then we'll start paying on the principal.
So that, that would be, like, the interest would go from, like, the seven, nine, six, once we get it, everything started?
That's when it'll start.
That's when we'll start paying on premium.
Yeah, okay, and then it'll go to four percent.
So it takes you four years to get to where you can finish and lock in your loan. Well, you, that four years, you're gonna pay interest on that?
Right.
The whole time, but it's not paying on your loan at all.
Right.
We don't have a schedule from them yet. They haven't got everything ready to it. But some of the ones that Ryan has dealt with, that's the bond, some of theirs is final in twenty twenty-seven.
Next meeting, public meeting, or we have to have a?
Yeah, so Ryan's recommendation was we had this reading tonight. We will advertise this in the paper, post this where we said we'd post it. And then he recommend, he recommended that we just have a public hearing right before our city council meeting, meeting in November. And he will be here for that, to do the reading and you'll do the, uh, bond ordinance and the rate ordinance adoption all then.
And this route covers what we're told from the top down we have to do.
Cover that three hundred and ninety-six thousand.
It's easiest on folks, residential.
Try to make it easier on the residential, which it hurt our commercial customers more.
Bad, yes. Yeah, okay.
Kind of make a motion to move next month, city council meeting back to seven? Cause if we have a meeting before, it'll be at five o'clock?
Not, not that, that, he's not meaning like the day of, he means like, you gotta, you can't.
Yeah, he was saying the day, but that's what we did last time we did a rate. We had a five o'clock meeting, public hearing, and then we had the city council meeting at six.
Will that be next month?
Yeah, hours should be playing time. Hours should be playing time.
Yeah, but I won't be here at 5. Most likely, well, I can maybe, hopefully.
He'll get calls. Yeah.
But I mean, if you are gonna move the meeting, this would be the time because I will advertise that. We'll advertise what time the meeting is. So if you do want to vote to move your meeting, I recommend you do it now. That way I can advertise that.
Can you just, you can call a public meeting though anytime, can't you?
I can. That was just his recommendation because he will be here at the meeting.
Right.
So he'll charge me to come to that meeting and he'll charge me to come to another one. So that was just his recommendation.
We want him for the public hearing.
What?
We want him to be for the public hearing. Be here. Yeah. And he's gonna be here for the city council meeting, has to be. So we don't want to pay him to come here twice.
Was he pricey?
Yeah. Yeah.
That'd be the question. Maybe he can just come up and, you know, hang out, go to a ballgame.
For each closing, we're paying over $20,000.
Just too little over minimum wage. We're good.
It's like Donnie and Robert say, it's, yeah, it's, it's not something, hey, let's just gouge somebody. It's something that's, it's getting a lot tougher.
We, I mean, we had our other options. I mean, um.
Oh, we hammered out it pretty good. I mean, I knew it was gonna be tough on.
What our downfall was a sewer. It really was. It actually, the entire amount was almost all sewer that we were lacking.
We, we.
We tried to divide it up as even as we thought we could.
Just a lot of old sewer problems and we're not the only town that's gonna do that. But it's just.
But do you think the $10 million, if they build that new processing plant, how much more we're gonna spend on sewer for that? Cause that's not even taken into account.
I'm hoping that it's less money because they do pretreatment.
Now, they're gonna do pretreatment.
Right now, there is no treatment before it comes to.
I think that, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Well, I mean, to get it from Choctaw to here, it's gonna cost a little more.
Well, not really. Because, I mean, yes, it will be going, right now it's going, it's going through one of my lift stations. It's not a good lift station. Where they're gonna be, they're gonna have to put in their own lift station to get it to meet gravity. And then it's gonna go through two of my lift stations, which are the newest lift stations we have in the system.
So the location is pretty, is favorable.
Point being is engineering should, should tell you before they build whether our system can handle it without requiring our system. Just that money deserves one customer.
Yes.
Yeah.
See, I don't know if it would go to behind DL's and then have to back up the hill.
It will go to DL's. It will go through both our lift stations.
Which are.
But those are the new ones.
Yeah. Those are the new ones. But where they're going, they're gonna have to pump it into my gravity system and then the gravity across to the first lift station.
So they, they probably go that.
Hopefully they'll grind up. They'll have a first, I mean, hopefully, and they'll do a better job of pretreating because they're having to maintain that lift station.
Cause if they don't, it's gonna tear their pump up first.
Right now, they're not doing a good job on some of it.
Right now, they're costing me money.
But if they tie in, but this gives us an opportunity before they can tie in to our sewer, we can require that our sewer.
Yeah. We have a pre, we have a pretreatment ordinance. It's already in effect. It's been in effect. You guys had it in effect whenever we had the bigger chicken plant in. Their guidelines are there.
So maybe it'll be a little bit of the money cost on the sewer.
Well, that and yes, this is gonna be the, one of the first loans you guys have taken out since that sewer was originally put in. I mean, the guys behind me made a comment about it not being maintained. And first few times, that's what you're really getting into. Your sewer lines that we're gonna be replacing are original, you know, so.
Yeah. I could, I could speak to that too. I mean, I'm seeing that across Arkansas. Certain lines we're working with. I mean, your biggest gap in preferred maintenance is usually with the lines that exceeded their useful life. You know, we mentioned, you know, water loss earlier in the meeting and, you know, that water's just going somewhere. And, and that's where the cost is gonna be in the lighting and the digging.
Even the little bit we did at Semelot with the sewer, Dickie was here and putting in it. It stopped that, but it was, it was ridiculously costly, I thought, then.
It was. You know, and that was, I've seen pictures before. I mean, that's a nice subdivision now.
Yes.
I wouldn't have lived in it before you guys did that.
If they went and did enough favors that they built a new house.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Right by where the problem used to be.
Yeah. That's where.
And one guy put a swimming pool right where the problem used to be, you know? I mean, I've seen lots of pictures. I've visited with those neighbors. They are appreciative and I hope that other parts of the system that see this other money being spent correctly are appreciative just like Semelot. You know? We talk about our tanks, our tanks are bad.
I hate it. I hate it for everybody.
I'm glad the, the painting of the tanks come in the way they did.
Everything's hot. It's ridiculous.
Every bit of this.
Do what?
Every, every bit of this is maintenance and, and things that this act is pretty much giving, making us do. I mean, we need to do, but it is saying.
That act in some small systems is keeping it from being the can kicked down the hill. I mean, it's just, it really is. It is good. It was, it wasn't put in to hurt, but it has hurt some.
Was the initial.
We needed to go up and we did. You guys went up five years ago and made a big deal. If you guys hadn't done that, it would have been.
10%.
It would have been that over 100% that they said they are seeing.
The people that are having the hardest time with that act are folks that have continued to kick the can.
Right. See, that's what happened to us. We got thrown into this 20 years before we were a city council.
Thing, someone, I don't know if I caught this wrong. I thought that I heard it read and I thought I'd read it that way too. It said 3%.
Yeah.
That's what it said.
Yeah. And I was, I was just, I was looking back to make sure, because I, it stood out to me when you read the 3% on the sewer. But it is also on that water.
Yeah.
So that will go up five years at 3%. We were five.
Were five. So it's actually coming down, but going up.
Yeah. And that, ANRC's recommendation as a whole with our rate study, they recommended going 3 and then looking at it for five years and that's what.
We never got to the place that said, well, if we look in three or four years, if we take it off, we did. We never got to take it off. And a lot of people say, they'll never do, and, and we didn't.
If we hadn't have done that, we hadn't have made that increase, we'd have never made it through COVID. And I don't like to blame stuff on COVID. I really don't. But everything increased during COVID. We made some rate increases that helped us still make supply chain during COVID.
Yeah. It, it's painful, but it, it's no doubt.
We just didn't go up on the rates like 15, 20 years ago. Like 40.
Well, we can only do, we're here right now.
I said, when the chicken plant closes, when. Yeah. That's what killed it. That's when they started needing to make rate increases, but they wouldn't kick it down the road.
Well, it's, it's being done now, even if we all get fired. But we'll see. And then, and I'm open to.
Let somebody else figure it out then.
And while we're still being recorded and still going on Facebook, I do have, I have these different options. If anybody wants to come, we have it, we have it rolled out. So if you are a customer that lives inside city limits and you know you normally use 5,000 gallons, I can tell you what your bills can change to down. I mean, so we can come in, if anybody wants to come in, call the office, set up a time. I will, I will listen to you and I will talk to you.
I do believe it was the most manageable for, for fixed income folks.
That's what we, that was the basis.
I don't have anymore.
That was the basis.
Average house, a residential, uh, in a water line size, you know, that.
Coming into a house like.
Normal residential, half, quarter, I mean, I mean, a 1-inch line.
Most of our taps, like most of your fees are gonna be that 3/4 tap fee. Yeah. And I have a lot of commercials that are 3/4 tap. Very few 1-inch and then we have even smaller, the 2-inch prices, all those bigger prices and stuff. That's not, that's not a lot of people. You know, local foods, we talked about the chicken plant and others, they're a 2-inch meter person. But they're on the industrial rate. So they went up too. We went up $500 on the sewer minimum on them. And then we went up a $100 water minimum on them.
But we lost so much with the industrial.
We did. We lost, when we did the industrial rate, we lost about $100,000 a year.
And that was for five years?
You lose a lot by not fixing stuff. We're going in the right direction, it's just painful. Anything else under, uh, that new business? I appreciate it. Donnie, I appreciate you sticking around. Robert probably had to get, appreciate you coming up, talking about the lots and good to see everybody here. Any public comments of any kind? Brings me down to mayor's comments. Tuesdays at 6 o'clock at the library, Marge Leclair and the library crew have just had, they're, they're doing some, actually some pretty good speakers there. John Thurston was there, Secretary of State, very informative. That's a really good thing. If you're not, if you don't like going Tuesday nights at 6 o'clock, go to the library and you might learn something. Do it quick, cause I think I'll end up speaking that night. Take it off, you're gonna learn anything. DL mentioned the burnouts. I think the young man, the Bryson boy, they've got him, uh, some money sent back at Cash Saver. It's a place you can donate. Great kid, hard worker, lost everything in his house, just consider that. Lot, lot of things you can support, but that'd definitely be a good one. I mentioned all the upcoming events. Public meeting, if that changes, we'll, we'll let you know on that. DL's been going on fumes. His dad, I think, is getting better. So I did want to mention that. Moonshine Festival volunteers, anybody wants to work with that, call me. 253-0160, I think that's a good thing they're having first of November. And there's a lot, lot of things. Call me on, on anything else again. Thanks for, uh, Performance Services for coming up tonight. Appreciate it. And if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion second to adjourn.
I'm looking at the.